This meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:30 PM Tuesday, September 19th, 2017, in room 137 of the Edison Building. Present at the board table is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of Schools and a non-voting ex officio member of the board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, the Assistant Board Clerk. Ms. Edgar, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Barlow.
Here.
Mrs. Becker.
Here.
Ms. Marvin.
Here.
Mr. Schlusner.
Here.
Ms. Seelinger.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Chair Workman.
Here.
Mr. Munoz.
Yes, tonight we have the pleasure of having two students from Bamber Valley Elementary School to lead us in the pledge.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Nice job, guys.
2.01, approval of the agenda. This is an action item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, there is one change. Item 3.03, Trauma Informed Schools Conference has been added to the agenda.
Approval.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Announcements and communication. 3.01, Collaboration with Mayo Sports Medicine. Mr. Munoz.
At this time, I'll call Mark Queasly, Century High School's Activities Director. He'll be joined by Mr. Carl Erickson from Mayo Clinic and Mr. Michael Peta, also from Mayo Clinic.
Good evening, Mr. Munoz, Ms. Edgar, Chair Workman and Board Members. A few weeks ago, you approved a new three-year agreement with Rochester Public Schools and the Mayo Clinic. And at that time, we were hoping to have time where we could come in and give you just an update on this new three-year collaboration with the Mayo Clinic Sports Medicine Department. But we didn't have time, so we scheduled this at a later time when both of these gentlemen were available. And so we're going to take you through just a few slides about this new contract and some new offerings that we have.
So first of all, I'm Michael Peta, an Operations Manager for Sports Medicine at Mayo Clinic, and I work very closely with Carl Erickson, who's our Outreach Performance Coordinator and kind of in charge of Strength and Conditioning Services as well. But thanks for, you know, having us and the time that you've allotted. So just to kind of give a, you know, high-level overview, I know you're all familiar with the services that we provide in the schools, but I'll just kind of go through the slide deck, you know, one by one. We have a history going back to about 2006 with our athletic training services. And that's kind of where we started with the school district and other schools in Rochester. Our primary focus on most of the services that we do provide are for, you know, education and a focus on injury prevention. So it's really, I view it as, you know, an extended resource for coaches, for student athletes, parents, staff, you know, as kind of that extension. So with athletic training, you know, we have day-to-day services within the school. When we're doing injury prevention, we're triaging athletes and injuries and doing, you know, a lot of taping of ankles and that sort of thing. But also, you know, we have athletic trainers that are present at a lot of games. And that's been, I think, invaluable just for particularly coaches. They don't have to, you know, guess or second-guess whether, you know, should an athlete go back in, should we keep them out? I think it's a peace of mind for parents as well, having their children, you know, having those student athletes, you know, in a game, potentially injured, and having somebody with that medical training and background that can triage, you know, make an appropriate medical call. So I'll go to the next slide, maybe. Strength and Conditioning, this is really kind of Carl's wheelhouse, so I'll let Carl talk just about, you know, the Strength and Conditioning Services that we started really just a couple of, a few years ago in 2014. Carl's been heavily involved with that. You know, we think that that's been an invaluable service as well, so.
Yeah, thank you, Michael. We have, we're coming up on four years of Strength and Conditioning Services in the high schools at all four Rochester High Schools, but the three public high schools. And Mark and the Athletic Directors identified a need for helping to continue to improve the performance of the athletic teams, but not just improving the performance, but also addressing injury prevention, which is a big part of what Strength and Conditioning does. We work very closely with the Athletic Training Staff, helping to support, we provide a lot of support for the student athletes. We're closely with coaches and the Athletic Directors coordinating training throughout the year. So we focus on delivering these training services to in-season teams. That's our priority team. And then we also have services that are for out-of-season athletes, so they can continue to progress throughout their academic year. Each day, we are in the high schools from 3:00 to 6:00 o'clock in the evenings, working with these teams, providing an opportunity for them to continue to develop good, healthy habits for a lifetime, really, is another big part of what we do, but provide that education that Michael talked about around strength training. Strength training can be a very overwhelming topic, especially for high-school-aged kids, and we provide some direction for them that keeps them safe. So we have these certified Strength and Conditioning Professionals working with all the high schools, which was a need that was identified. During the summer, we have a 10-week program, which has been valuable. We don't really have an off-season for athletes during the school year, and that's the one time where we can really focus on physical preparation for the upcoming seasons.
I think the next couple of topics, so, you know, we sat down with Mark and his team, and really as myself and our Athletic Training Supervisor and Carl had kind of gone out to all of our contracted schools, Rochester Public Schools obviously is our, you know, the largest, you know, piece of that, but we really wanted to listen to what do the schools need, what do they want, where are maybe the gaps, and where can we fill in to help support and complement, you know, what everybody is already doing? I think the biggest lesson out of that is really just additional and further education around, you know, performance and nutrition, particularly, I think, for coaches, but student athletes as well and their parents. I think there's a lot of great information you can get out there on the Internet, there's a lot of misinformation. And so, starting in, you know, 2017, this contract and really moving forward in this three-year agreement is, you know, how do we fill those, fill in those gaps with performance and nutrition education? Nutrition is a big one, particularly as, I'm sure you're all aware, with the student-athlete population. Many times, you know, whether they're traveling and, you know, they have a choice between, you know, McDonald's and Taco Bell or what have you, you know, what do they choose? So we have on-staff dietitian who work very well with the student-athlete, really are able to connect with them, build programs around it, and just educate, you know, those student-athletes around what is good nutrition. And it goes for performance as well. You know, and we really focus on, you know, things like movement, proper lifting, and how do you, you know, do a workout that's going to be at the most benefit? So moving into that contract, we have specific things built in where we'll be able to send out our experts in performance and nutrition for education sessions with the student-athletes, with coaches, with the school staff and parents as well, so that we're kind of covering everybody. And then, you know, one of the things we talked about as well is that, you know, we wanted to take this beyond just a sort of a service agreement, as you will, or if you will, you know, providing that athletic training or Strength and Conditioning Services for the school. We really wanted to find ways where we can collaborate, you know, with Rochester Public Schools. So the last thing on the slide really is, you know, we talked about doing a collaborative event. You know, what that will end up being, we don't know, but the idea, the goal was really, what can we do together to use the resources with Rochester Public Schools, with Mayo Clinic Sports Medicine, to develop something that, you know, not a fundraiser, but something where we can, we can have a great program or a great event for student-athletes to come to, where we generate some money that can maybe go back into the school system to help support, you know, the performance, the nutrition, and other types of programs. So the idea really and the goal is that we take it beyond just that, that sort of service agreement to a true partnership where we were able to collaborate, you know, with one another. So I think that's where, you know, we're very open to hearing, you know, what the district might have thoughts on and responding. We feel we're here to provide that service. You know, we love being a part of Rochester Public Schools and, I mean, thoroughly enjoy working with all the student-athletes. I mean, that's something that's very rewarding for all of us to be able to be a part of, so.
Yeah, I would agree. This has been a great fit for our department. And now, as we've spent this year trying to expand this collaboration effort, we wanted this contract not necessarily to lock us in, but offer us some flexibility where if in year two we find that we have a great need someplace K-12, that we can come back to this group and say, hey, would you be interested in doing this with us? And I think that really helped us open the door with this. As they both said, when it started in our infancy of this, we really had that need for prevention and care of the actual athlete and keeping them safe. And then we found that our next weakness was the Strength and Conditioning, and our coaches, who are part-time, didn't have the time and resources to put into all of the other sides outside of the Xs and Os. And then, once we increased strength, we increased their performance, we found a glaring need in that nutrition. We were getting the kids out there, and all of a sudden they were crashing because they weren't taking good care of themselves nutritionally. So that's why that one kind of evolved for us as well, so.
One of the, one of the things that our dietitian, that really stuck out to me is, I listened to him talk to a group of athletes in our center, was that you can't outperform a poor diet. And so, no matter what we're doing on the performance side, if you're not eating well, you're not eating right, if you're not hydrating, just some of the basic things, doesn't matter what you do in the weight room or on the field, you're not going to be at your, you know, your optimum, your peak performance. So we really try and have that full continuum of both the clinical care and then taking care of the athlete on the performance and nutrition side, so.
Do you have any questions for us?
Yeah, I have a quick question. Do you ever include talking about sleep?
We do. Yeah, we do.
I mean, this is a real hot-button topic these days.
Yeah, we absolutely do. And in fact, over the past, you know, year, we've had a sports psychologist onboard as well. So that's a service both available for individuals, but he also works with teams, with groups. And part of that is, you know, you know, just mental resiliency, but part of that is obviously, you know, getting, getting good sleep.
Mr. Barlow.
Well, thank you, Mark, for your ongoing leadership for all things related to sports. Quick question regarding the SAQ 10-week program. And is there a fee associated with that, or how are students enrolled in that? Can you maybe speak to that a moment?
Let me start with that. We do the registration through our department, and that's been kind of a nice handoff for them. So we do online registration, and there is a fee associated with that 10 weeks. It roughly comes out to less than $2 an hour, about $2 an hour for a student-athlete to come in and get that sports performance training. And then, when they register online for us, if there is a student who cannot pay the fee, our system, just like it does for participating in athletics or activities, will kick it back and that student's fee will be waived. And that's an agreement that we have within this as well, is that it's not meant to be a barrier, we want the students to participate, but we have to register them, so this is a nice way for us to, and then they don't have to worry about that. We just roll over the total participation numbers at the end of the summer and then work on the billing, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Munoz.
Thanks. First of all, I just, I think this is a great program, and I'm so pleased that we have expertise from outside our schools coming into our schools to work with our kids. I remember one of you as a little kid.
I wonder.
He remembers you, too.
You're on my case.
So English is pretty much why you became the person you are today.
Absolutely.
You were really a little kid, so just don't hurt me. When you're talking about nutrition, if you find an athlete, for instance, who is, has a lousy diet and simply can't get nutritious food, you know, can't afford it, do we, can we do anything then? I mean, is there?
I think it's a great question, and I wish that our dietitian was here to speak to that because, and we actually have a, we changed hands on that, so we have a newer dietitian, but the dietitian we were working with, Lou Corey, that's where I think, you know, he, you know, just they're very gifted at, I think, being able to meet that athlete, you know, where they are. So, I mean, we have athletes, you know, and active individuals from all walks of life who come in, and I think that there are things that I think they can do. And I wish that, you know, they were here so they could speak, you know, in more detail and give more specifics. I don't have that background, but I guess what I would say is that that's why we feel that the education piece is so important, so that we can get the dietitian in front of not just the student-athletes, but the parents who are also doing the shopping. So, you know, I think of a number of things that we can do, like we talk about collaboration. I mean, on the fifth floor of our building at the Dan Abraham Healthy Living Center, you know, we have a huge kitchen, and part of what they do up there for Healthy Living is, we teach people about basic, I mean, fundamental nutrition, how to shop, how to grocery shop, and even when you're on a strict budget, so.
The other piece that I've noticed, whether it's our Strength and Conditioning Coach or our Athletic Trainers, is when we have a female athlete who is really struggling with nutrition, they are able to recognize it and get it, that information to us, which is very helpful. And then we can turn it over to our nurse and work through that process with us within the district and do it very quietly on behalf of the student, too. We are noticing that there are female athletes out there that are really struggling with that identity piece, and when you add athletics on top of it, their weight is a difficult thing for them to manage, so.
Thank you. Mr. Schlusner.
This sounds like a great collaboration with our student-athletes. So the question I have is, for our students who are not student-athletes, it seems like there could be a lot of things that are brought back to you, say, in the fire classroom or the health sciences classroom. Is there anything going on in that space for the rest of our students who are not after-school athletes?
Absolutely. First of all, our after-school Strength and Conditioning, our weight rooms are open to students who are not involved in our actual teams. And so we just have slots available for them to be able to come in and do that healthy living workout. And secondly, and maybe Carl will want to answer the other part of the question, when it comes to what we've collaborated with the, with the Physical Education Department.
Yeah, so we've had some discussions with Physical Education Department, always trying to add value to the PE curriculum. There was a curriculum discussion and actually new additions to the curriculum that was kind of based around human performance and wellness. And I think those are going well. This is the second year.
Second year of those.
So, yeah, we've had opportunities to speak to classes, sports medicine, kind of highlighting sports medicine careers as well. So opening up different avenues, not just for physical literacy, but also future careers as well.
We've had students go down and tour the Dan Abrams Building as well as part of that classroom. And just opening that door of all of the opportunities that are available in the medical field that are related to athletic injuries, but it's physical therapy, occupational therapy, all those different avenues, has been very helpful.
Sounds good, thanks.
Yeah, I want to thank you for, it is a great partnership, and I appreciate your willingness to each year reevaluate and see if there's other ways that we can expand the partnership we have. I appreciate that we're looking at the entire student-athlete instead of just a certain component of that athlete. And then, just an idea out there, you have a partnership with four high schools in Rochester Public Schools. It might be easier for the four high schools to do a collaborative event versus the three and then one, trying to do one by themselves. So that might be something to consider, having the four high schools that you work with doing this together, instead of the public schools doing one and then the other high school doing one. Just a suggestion.
And we are just in the early stages. We just had one morning where we had coffee and kind of discussed what is our next step. And then, about November, I think, we're planning on really rolling up our sleeves to really tackle that community event. And we really want to sell it as a community event, and even for our small schools around Rochester, to be able to send students to this collaborative event as well, as we think is very beneficial for everybody.
And I agree with that point. In fact, we've already opened up kind of that dialogue with the other high schools. You know, they've gone through some changes, so we're giving it a little bit of time. But that was my thought as well, is, you know, if everybody's amenable to collaborating together to do something, you know, truly unique and, you know, for Rochester, then I think that's, that'd be fantastic, so.
I really appreciate your coming to speak to us about this, and I think it's important, not only for the board to hear you, but for the community to realize that we do really have some great community, school district kinds of partnerships that we don't always hear about. And I really want to thank you for all your efforts in making this go, and certainly to Mr. Queasly as well. I'm impressed.
Thank you. No, we really appreciate the time, like I said, and we're happy to come anytime to provide a debate or answer questions. It's, like I said, we truly, you know, love working with the school district, and it's been a great relationship, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
3.02, School Board Committee Assignment Updates. Board Members. Mr. Schlusner.
I'd just like to put out that for the Public School Foundation, we still have our fall event coming up for Boo, that's the Century High School. And the more that we can support the foundation, the more the foundation can support the students and staff of Rochester Public Schools.
Do you have the date off the top of your head for that?
I pointed to the website, rpsf.org.
Okay, fair enough. Mr. Barlow.
I just wanted to brief the board on the first student-school board meeting, which was held last week. And what a wonderful experience that it is. Those who have been a part of it probably already know the value of it. But for me, having recently been appointed to be one of two board representatives to our students, the thing that probably stood out most to me was the student-engaged students speaking to students and working together, and as board members, hearing the concerns that are occurring at the individual school level, but as well as now realizing that those same students can go back to their individual schools. And the superintendent and his staff has arranged to meet, have those students meet, I believe, monthly, is that correct, superintendent, with the school administration to share those concerns. And I just think it's a wonderful thing. And one of those types of things that, as we have talked about, the community, I think if the community knew that these great things like that were occurring, they could really, I think, give a great shout-out to the school, the superintendent, and their children who serve on this school board. Thank you.
Mr. Munoz.
Yeah, I just want to follow up with Don. I think it's, probably shouldn't say this, but of all the different groups that I interact with, it's probably one of my favorites because it is, I didn't say.
One of.
One of. Because they're, you know, they're our number-one customer. They're here, that's why we do what we do, and it's great to have them provide input and feedback and hear about their concerns and suggestions. And we've made some changes across the district because of things that we've learned from these students. And something new that's going to be happening this year with that group, and it wasn't for our first one, but part of our integration agreement, we have a collaboration with a couple of the surrounding districts. And part of their plan is that they will send some students to attend a student-school board meeting. So I know Off-Lively has a schedule on which districts are coming when, but it'd be an opportunity not only for their students to interact with our kids, but our kids to interact with students from another district. And so that's something that is going to be new to this, and not sure how that's going to go, but we think it should go well. But that'll be something that will be happening in the future, that group.
Ms. Marvin.
Yeah, members of our Community Engagement Committee continue to meet with members of the Community Focus Team as they are continuing to form their team and kind of determine how they want to move forward. This is a group of wonderful people who are deeply committed to equity in this district, and I think that they are doing the work that they need to do so that they can move forward in a very positive way. And I think they're not going to go away. They're going to be doing important work, and they're really in this for the long haul. So it's great to have this group so committed to our district and to our kids.
Yeah, I forgot to mention one more thing. Today is the second and final day of our communication audit. There's been a lot of people coming in and out of this building yesterday and today, and I think we're projected to have them come back sometime in November to present the findings, I think it's November, to the school board. So we will do, I think, a short exit phone call with them tomorrow, but I think it's probably, they told us, I think, sometime in November before we'll get our report back. And then, we've asked them to come and present that to the school board.
One other event that Mr. Barlow and Ms. Seelinger and I attended was the Minnesota School Board Association Advocacy Tour, which is to find out basically what kinds of issues are really important to us in the surrounding area of issues that they would like to have brought before the legislature this year. And there were two things that stood out. One was special education. We've heard that before. And the other one was the funding of the Teacher Retirement Association Pension, which, as some of you know, is, really needs some help. So that was, that was a very interesting time. I don't know, do either of you have anything you want to add to that? Okay, great. Anything else?
3.03, Trauma Informed Schools Conference. This is an information item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time, I'm going to have Denise Moody, Assistant Director, Student Services, provide some information on this exciting conference.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's not showing up.
Give it a second.
It will.
Okay.
Thank you for having me. I want to share a conference that Rochester Public Schools is hosting on November 16th and 17th. We will have the Midwest Trauma Informed Schools Conference here in Rochester at the Kayler Apache. As we continue to learn more about the impact of adverse childhood experiences and the pivotal research done by Kaiser Permanente, and about the impact of toxic stress and how it affects the neurodevelopment of kids, and creates maladaptive behaviors that make school and learning difficult for students, we can often come away from those presentations and that research going, ugh, this is heavy, and what do we do next? And that's really the purpose of this conference, is to be able to answer that question of what, what can we do? How can we build systems of support for our kids for, that allow them to be successful in school? So even when they have some maladaptive behaviors that have served them well in their life experiences, how can we build systems in our schools that allow them to learn and allow them to be successful? So it really partners with some of our work that we've done around PBIS, around response to intervention, around multiple. response to intervention, around multi-tiered systems of support, and around culturally responsive practices, and brings it together and looks at it from a systemic standpoint on how do we both develop systems in our school that are responsive to that, and how do we work directly with students in a way that is trauma-informed and meets them where they are and helps them build resilience to be successful at school? So this conference, we have quite a few people registered. We're hoping to sell out by the beginning of October. We hope to be able to do this annually as just a way to kind of keep this in our mind and work together with some of our surrounding school districts and people in this area. We have people attending from Wisconsin and Iowa and a lot of the surrounding school districts, as well as our own people, to just bring people together and to be able to learn from each other as we do this important work. I do have some Save the Date cards that I will put out on the front desk if you guys are interested. Do you have some questions for me on this?
Yes. Sorry. Ms. Seelinger.
Denise, can you, if anybody's listening and wants to have no more information, where can they get that?
Yes, there is a website. It's, can I scroll down a little bit? So it's on our Rochester website, so here is the link. So it's the PBIS conference.
Okay, great. Thank you. Want to help you sell out.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Who from our school district will be attending?
We are still accepting registration, so I know that we have some cabinet members who are attending. I think primarily, well, I think there's a lot of people interested, but people who are providing those kind of behavior interventions and supports and administrators, I think, are kind of the target audience. But we would certainly welcome anybody who is interested in this work and wanting to do this.
Great. Thank you for doing this work and for having this conference. I look forward to hearing about it.
Thank you.
Consent Agenda. This is an action item. Are there any items that board members would like to have removed for separate consideration? Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Efficient and Effective Operations, 7.01, Approval of Credit Card Processing Services for Student Nutrition Services. This is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time, Amy Ike, Executive Director, Community Education, will brief us on this item.
Good evening, board members. Tonight's Student Nutrition Services item is about the credit card processing system that we use to take in payments towards student breakfast and lunch accounts. This is a system that we've had in place for several years. We're coming to the end of four years on this system under a current agreement. Each year, the percentage rate that we've paid has come down. Through last year, this year, we're at the same rate, 3.8% that we were last year. So in the spring, we will go out for an RFP to check on additional systems that are available. This system called PAMS, or Parent Management System, is, the cost of this is absorbed by the Student Nutrition Services Department. Each school district treats that a little bit differently. Some districts charge the actual cost back to parents, some charge a flat transactional fee. We do not pass that back at this point to parents. That is absorbed in our Student Nutrition Services budget. So because the total cost of the credit card fees that run through that system exceeds $100,000, we're here for your annual approval of that.
Ms. Seelinger.
Ms. Ike, I don't know if you'll know this, because I know you're not SNES, but has that dollar amount continued to grow as?
It has over time, both in, I guess, in the volume of credit card dollars that are going through the system. And so even though the percentage has come down, the percentage against each dollar that's charged for the credit card fee, the total amount has gone up.
So in theory, and I love PayPal, I could save the district money if I just wrote a check every month?
You could, or paid cash, even better, because then we don't worry about checks not going through.
Not saying I'll do that, because I love my PayPal, but...
Another question, I don't mean to put you on the spot. Is it pretty clear to parents that this is costing the district money, or is that something that's not addressed?
Like, that's a good question.
Because I think, you know, as to your question, you know, we don't know that.
No.
But I think it's, I mean, 3.8%.
I don't know that. That we make that very obvious.
It's over $100,000. It's a chunk of change. And perhaps if parents were better or more informed, they might be more likely to write a check instead of pulling out the plastic. Mr. Smith.
Do we charge the same amount regardless of how they pay?
We do.
That might be an idea. Wouldn't send people then. Cost them less.
Anything else?
I'd like to make a motion to approve, make a motion to move this to action.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move this to action. All those in favor of moving this item to action, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is now an action item. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby select paypams.com for Student Nutrition Credit Card Processing Services for School Year 2017-2018. Any discussion? Any more discussion? Do we have discussion?
Not yet.
I want to talk about it. It's moved and, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Ike. 7.02, Approval of 21st Century Community Learning Center Cohort 7 Grant Payment. This is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, Amy Ike, Executive Director, Community Education, will brief us on this item as well.
Thank you. Totally different subject. We, I'm happy to share with you that we recently learned that we received our full amount for our next cohort of the 21st Century Learning Center grant. This is a federal grant that passes through the state of Minnesota. The state received 55 grant applications this year. They were able to fund 13 of those applications. We feel pretty good to be among those 13. Just to give you an idea, the state will actually fund applications with a score going down to 80%. They actually ran out of money at 89% this year and had several more grants that could have qualified had they had more dollars. And so it's a competitive grant marketplace for this. This is the only federal grant that specifically accesses after-school. And as I understand from folks who've been in the district longer than I have, our after-school programs at the middle school, especially where we target a lot of these dollars, looks a lot different today under this grant money than it used to, because it opens the doors for all of our kids to participate. So what we do is infuse the grant dollars, targeted services dollars, community ed fees. We braid those together and provide, hopefully, a relatively seamless after-school program at the middle level. This year, we're also including our two community schools. After-school is one of the core components of a full-service community school. So this gives us the opportunity to add that next component. And then we have four community partners. Boys and Girls Club of Rochester has been a longtime partner of ours and agreed to be our co-applicant this time, which means that they actually join us in administering the grant as well, in leading where we're headed with the grant, in leading quality assessment and quality improvement across all of our sites, including theirs and the other partners. And then we have three programs that geographically kind of cover the city and work with Somali youth after-school. We've worked with the Rochester International Youth Organization for about 10 years. They've come back on with this one. And we have two new partners, Somalia Rebuild Organization, which is directed by Mr. Omar Noor, and the Somali Kulon Community, which is under Mr. Abdi Robal. They are expanding their programs in different ways, and they give us a good geographic coverage of the district. So all of the partners will meet regularly. We're all working to help kids learn and connect with each other, become who they want to be. The reason we're coming in front of you tonight, other than to share the good news, is because the amount of the grant that goes to the Boys and Girls Club on an annual basis is $100,000, which, as you know, is our threshold for approval before we can make that payment to them. That is not paid out all at once. It's paid out throughout the year as they also show that they are doing the work of the grant and provide the data back that they need to provide back to us. But the total payment each year is $100,000. And so we do need your approval to make that payment.
Ms. Marvin.
First of all, congratulations and thank you. I know it's a huge amount of work that goes into writing grant to get that kind of funding. Secondly, the equity lens that the board adopted as we look at how we're spending money and making policy, four questions. Who benefits from this policy? Who's disadvantaged by it? What assumptions are we making and whose voices are we missing? It seems to me that the work you're doing and this program and the way that the programs continue to evolve, you continue to address all of those questions. And I just think this is an example of our district and your department just doing exactly the right thing. So, thank you.
We are exactly trying to work on those types of things, because we know after-school can open the door, change trajectory, and this is a way that we take away the financial barrier.
Right, exactly. Thank you.
Mr. Barlow.
And I'd like to also echo, kudos as well. I do know Mr. Robal and Mr. Noor. In fact, at the City Council of the Hall yesterday, Mr. Noor had shared his excitement of the grant being awarded. And this will be a great opportunity for the community as a whole, and particularly the district, though, to have a positive impact on children in general. So thanks for the good work.
Just to make the point that I made earlier, I think this is another fine example of what we are doing to work with community members and our partnerships with them and working together so that all of our students can be successful. So thank you so much for your leadership and your efforts in this. Appreciate it. Mr. Smith.
I'd like to move this to action.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move this action, this item to action. All those in favor of moving this item to action, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is now an action item. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve a total payment of $100,000 per year during the period of Cohort 7 of the 21st Century Community Learning Center Grant to Boys and Girls Club of Rochester, provided that continue to meet grant requirements and funds from the grant remain available.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? More discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much and congratulations. 7.03, Five-Year General Fund Financial Forecast. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time, Mr. John Carlson, Executive Director of Finance, will provide this information for us tonight.
Well, good evening, board members. Superintendent Munoz, thank you for letting me be here. I wanted to give you a brief update on the five-year financial forecast. This is not our robust forecast that we'll be providing you on about December 5th. But I just wanted to give you kind of a preliminary view of what we know right now, so that you can use that in consideration of our next item that's coming. So I put that in big, bold, red print there. Really, the only thing that's changed from the last time I've given you this forecast on June 6th was we increased the state aid expected about $900,000 per year. And this was because, as we were sitting there at the study session, the law got signed that we would receive a 2% state aid increase, and we had built a budget based on 1.5% at that time. So this version does not adjust yet for final revenues and expenditures of 2016-17. We're just closing the books right now on that. We have not updated our student counts for 17-18. As Mr. Munoz had said last time, we had more students than we projected. We're waiting a couple more weeks, or maybe about one more week at this point, to see how that all sorts out. And then we don't have any grants, donations, or any expenditure adjustments in there yet. I'm going to skip over this one. And just note that, again, now the forecast has a 2% growth in state aid. We've achieved that number four consecutive years, so we've put that in there for the next five. And we have the voter-approved referendum now of $870.03 that will stay in place through the '25-'26 school year. And the school board has the local optional that it's taking. It also has the school board-approved referendum at 166.65. The biggest thing on our expenditures that we're still worried about is we don't have a settled teachers' and principals' contract, so it's hard to give really precise numbers when those contracts are just estimates right now on our expenditures. And then, as well as all of our other groups, we don't have data for after this school year. So I've put in yellow what has changed, or tried to highlight it here on this chart. And again, it's just the revenue line. And then the revenue line affects what the projected unassigned fund balance percentage would be at the end of the next four school years. So where we were projecting to be at the end of the school year, 6.9%, that number is updated to 7.3% with the extra $900,000. And then the year after that, 7.3%, then 6.9%, then 6.3%. So as it's looking right now, if we maintain a structurally balanced budget, we should meet board policy for the next four years. Again, a lot of assumptions that are in there, and the biggest one being the teacher contract, and we need to get that settled so we can figure out exactly where we're at. Key points I also want to highlight, and I did put this in red, too, as you read different economic data, the biggest thing is that our state does have a surplus right now that could quickly turn into a deficit if there's something in the broader economy that happens. And if state resources dry up, their biggest line item in their budget is education. So that could hinder our growth, and we may not achieve 2%. But that is what we're going to plan on at this point. Questions on the forecast?
Ms. Marvin.
The assumptions, I saw this in a couple places, are based on not hiring additional full-time employees.
Yes.
Is that realistic?
That is not probably realistic. We just began meeting last Friday as a group, and we're trying to rebuild the whole budgeting process from the ground up. And by that, I mean we're examining every line item, every staffing position. We're working with a group of 25 people across the district to figure out what should the assumptions be. So once we get that kind of negotiated and worked out, then we will come back and we'll probably need to revise our FTE growth into the future, which then would lower those percentage.
Mr. Smith.
I was just wondering about, given the, you know, the need to wait for some of these, you know, variables to have a better idea, to actually put a, I guess, a more meaningful projection together. Is the timing of this, is that something we need to be looking at? I mean, we mean a time requirement here when we're presenting this, or is this something we can wait until you have those numbers and make those adjustments?
Purely the reason for showing this tonight and trying to give a rough idea where we're at is just when we talk about the levy, just to know that that all feeds in. But...
Oh, okay, okay. All right. That's the main, that's the main reason.
That's the main reason.
Because it's connected to the...
Exactly. And, you know, at any given time, we're always going to have something unsettled, and we're going to have a whole bunch of assumptions that are baked in there.
Well, I guess to that, I'm wondering, then, if it's really just for the background of that, I'm just wondering if in the future, we might just want to just include it as part of that levy, as background to part of the levy discussion, not have it as a separate agenda item. I mean, it does draw attention, but the fact, I mean...
I was going to do it, I was going to do it both ways.
One way or the other, right?
Back and forth.
You're going to do it one way or the other. We need to do it one way or the other. I'm just thinking. I'm just thinking, because it's, you know, it'll be a lot more meaningful when you know, you pretty much know probably what you expect our student count's going to be, but you can't really confirm that till you hit a certain date, a date and time that kind of confirms that.
Is that October 1st?
October's the official count.
Yeah. It makes sense to really, in my mind, to, you know, it goes to background, but really, it's more meaningful after that, at that time period, because that'll answer your question. We're going to be looking at additional staff hires and things like that that are going to affect the expense side. So the only thing in this one is really, one thing you really factor in this is the increase in state aid at this point.
That's correct.
No additional revenues and no additional expenses.
That's correct. So in our next one, when we give you a more detailed look on December 5th, we'll get more updates on that.
Fair enough.
Because, you know, as our students enrollment increases, that brings in more money, but then you also need more cost to educate those additional students, so, yeah.
Mr. Barlow?
So just to be clear on my online, the construction of the budget, as it relates to Director Marvin's question, isn't necessarily out of consideration for, what year would that be? For future years, okay, 17-18?
18-19.
18-19, sorry. Okay. Okay, so whatever the student count in October will have no bearing on the effort that you're necessarily...
It will, because what we do then is we drop off a year of history, and we look back 10 years, and then we now include October 1st to 17, and try to project forward another 10 from there. So it'll move the needle just a little bit, depending on the actual count.
Yeah, and one of the main things that we're trying to accomplish through John's committee is trying to establish some standards for staffing. You know, if you're a high school, you get X amount of counselors and X amount of this and that. And if you're this size of elementary, so we can be more consistent on how we allocate staffing, that's kind of one of the big things we're trying to accomplish through that. And then, anything beyond that, schools could use their compensatory funding, their title funding, to fund some of the additional things. So, one of the things that we discovered this year is, in some areas, it was really, and this tracked back many years ago, on how certain buildings were allocated different positions. One building the same size, same enrollment, would have different kind of staffing. So the goal is to work with these people to establish what those standards will be. That'll help us, not only building the budget, but as we go through the staffing process, which is the beginning of the building of the budget, we're more consistent across the district.
Mr. Schlesner?
It's great to hear the efforts being put in place to essentially just be a more efficient district at the end of the day. That's really key when you talk such tight numbers.
Yeah, that's a good point. Thank you for sharing that, because when you look at a 7.3% fund balance, and we need to stay above 6% per year policy, that gives us a 1% margin of error. So we've got to be within 1%, which is very, very accurate in our projecting.
One last comment, if I may. And I certainly hear and understand the importance and value of efficiency, but I also appreciate the comment the superintendent made in terms of, you know, the organizational aspect, standardization, which I believe will be very important. And those basic key things that we believe, or management believes, that each school should have, the support structure is very important, and I appreciate hearing that.
Thank you so much for all your efforts and the hard work that you're doing, and I don't know, it sounds like you're going to be extremely busy. Do you have a cot in your office so you can be here 24/7?
Well, our timeline is to wrap up most of this by December 22nd on building the 18-19 budget, so...
Excellent.
If we do that, we'll be six months ahead of the curve, I think.
Please thank your department for us, too. 7.04, approval of proposed school district property tax levy payable 2018. This is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz?
Yes, Mr. Carlson, Executive Director of Finance, will brief us on this agenda item.
Good evening again. We will now go through the levy, now that you kind of have a context of our general financial position for the next few years. So this is something we kind of go through every year at this time, when we're talking about the levy, is where do the dollars go? There's three main buckets that we're funding with the local property tax dollars. We're funding the general fund for our general operational costs, teachers, paraprofessionals, principals, et cetera, et cetera. Community service fund, that's our community ed, early childhood, school readiness, adult basic ed classes. And then debt service. Anytime we're borrowing money, you're issuing bonds, and you're committing to levy that amount to pay off those bonds in the future. I moved this slide up this year. I just wanted to, again, highlight the tax base in Rochester. We, again, have experienced a significant growth, nearly 8% increase in the value of properties in our school districts. So if you remember 2016, we were at about $10.8 billion, then we went to $11.8 billion, and now we're sitting at about $12.8 billion. So the growth this year is about $300 million of new construction, so that's new houses, new businesses that have been added to the tax rolls, very healthy economy here, and about $641 million of inflation on existing properties. I got those numbers directly from Olmsted and Wabashaw County staff. As far as the levy, last year, we had a $53.9 million total property tax levy. We are projecting, and MDE has given us these numbers, that it would be $52.7 million next year. That's a decrease of $1.2 million, 2.2%. This feels a little unusual to be sitting here and saying the levy's going to go down. Usually trying to sit here and justify why is it going up, but now I'm going to give you a slide here in a couple minutes about why is it going down. But just know, $1.2 million down, 2.2% down. This is just another way of looking at it, if you break it down by how the levy is calculated. It's sometimes a misunderstanding that as the tax base grows, we automatically get more dollars. That is only true of one category, and that's the early childhood family education levy, and that's $500,000 of the levy. Most everything else is driven by the number of pupil units. So it's a dollar times the number of pupil units, so as number of students goes up, then the dollars go up. If students were to be going down, then those categories of levy would also be going down. So we're projecting a 2% growth in pupil units, and that's what's raising the levy there. Expenditure basis, there are many categories of the budget or of the levy that are based on actual expenditure. So we estimate a year and a half in advance of what we think the costs are going to be. We submit those to MDE, they verify the numbers, and then after the fact, so about a year and a half from now, they will go through the numbers and they will confirm that we spent that. If we didn't spend what we thought we would, they take money away from us on the next levy. If we spend more, then they give us additional levy authority to make sure that we're made whole on what was actually spent. There's very little of the budget that's calculated based on population, that's the community ed general levy, and then that bottom line is MDE adjustment. So that's, again, where they're truing up, and this year they're adjusting off $500,000. So primarily, that's in our debt service levy. You're supposed to levy 105% of what your debt payments are each year, and since our tax base pays their bills on time very regularly, we accrue a surplus there, and then we need to give that back to the taxpayers. But in some districts, they need that extra 5% because they have delinquencies, they run behind. We don't seem to have that problem in Rochester. So here are the three major reasons that are affecting the property tax levy. The biggest is the long-term facility maintenance revenue category. That's going down $1.6 million. And the reason that's happening is we shifted and shuffled a variety of projects around so that next summer, we can focus on the Hoover pre-kindergarten expansion and the indoor air quality at the existing Hoover facility. So we've put off a project or two, and we've borrowed the money for Hoover. We're going to pay that off over 15 years rather than needing the cash, all for that to pay as we go. We'll be making a payment on it for the next 15 years. But that's, in the short term, going to save us money on next year's levy. We have pupil unit increases, like I said, 240 pupil units, we're expecting for 18-19, higher than 17-18. And then the inflation rider that the voters approved in 2015 is estimated at 2%, so that's $13 per pupil unit next year. So these three things will kind of net out a million-dollar decrease, and that's 85% of what the change is year over year. Just wanted to, I know this is a little bit hard to read, but again, this just kind of quickly breaks down the three numbers within the per-pupil funding. So you've got the $870 of voter-approved. Again, that number was 857 last year, but with the 2% inflation, now it's 870. The $424 of local optional revenue, and the $166 of school board-approved levy authority equals the $1,460. So you just take that times the 19,000 pupil units we're expecting, and that is $27,957.
I have a quick question. I apologize for interrupting. So the $424 local option and the 166-65 board levy, if there were to be an inflation factor built into that, would that be something that the legislature would need to approve?
Exactly.
And how likely do you think that is? I hate to put you on the spot, but...
I would be...
While you're laughing, so...
Well, I would be in support of that. I just know that sometimes asking for more levy authority doesn't go over very well, but it's worth a shot. You make a good point. Those numbers are fixed and stone. They are going to be the same numbers. I will be telling you those same numbers...
Exactly.
Until they change the law.
Yep.
Whereas the top line, that one's just going to go up a little bit, or potentially go down a little bit. Again, this just kind of summarizes that the local referendum portion is 93% funded by local taxpayers, so our residences, our businesses, our farms are paying 93% of that money, and 7% of it's covered by state aid. Now, this is where the state tries to equalize and tries to adjust for the tax base. We have a very healthy tax base, so we end up paying most of it locally. You know, it wouldn't surprise me if in some districts, that could be 50-50, where local pays 50%, state pays 50%, but our mix is 93% to 7%. And there we go. Normally, you're supposed to approve the levy by September 30th unless you get a one-week extension by the home county auditor. We do have that extension through October 3rd, whatever your next meeting date is, so you do not have to approve this tonight unless you feel inclined to do so.
Do you see anything changing between now and...
No, I guess what I would recommend is that if you were to approve it tonight, that you would just approve the resolution as it's written to approve the maximum, and we don't state a dollar amount...
Right.
Because MDE is still adjusting little things in there.
Right.
And so the maximum number could go up 5,000 or down 5,000, so it's just safer to do maximum.
Mr. Barlow?
And John, not to, I fully support what your, what the resolution will state. Can you remind me again, what percentage of the total budget do local property taxes represent?
Well, thank you for asking that. 8%.
8%. And state, do you have a hand?
State aid is about 85%.
And then the remaining fed. Okay, thank you.
I guess we'll wait.
Okay.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Carlson, once more. And thank you for presenting such clear information. I especially appreciate it.
Move to action.
Are we done with it?
No.
You just moved on.
We're going to move it to action.
Or is it premature to do that?
I'll second it.
We second?
We're not actually, we're not actually setting it. That's the other thing, was it? You're setting it at the max, and then we actually do the final, when we do the budget, correct?
Correct.
So we're just allowing the flexibility. What I think we're doing at this point is allowing ourselves the maximum amount of flexibility. And then when all the information gets put together into a budget, we take into consideration what we need to levy, and if we need to adjust it downward at that point, we can do it. We don't have to raise it up.
We, well, and we can't raise it up.
No, we can only, we can only go down.
Right. It's been moved and seconded. All those, to move this to action, all those in favor of moving this item to action, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is now an action item. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 535 Rochester, Minnesota, being a school district in Olmsted County and Wabashaw County, Minnesota, that there be a proposed school tax levy upon all taxable property in said school district in an amount equal to the maximum levy limitation certified by the Minnesota Department of Education to the Olmsted County Auditor and Wabashaw County Auditor on or before October 6, 2017. And be it further resolved that the payable 2018 property tax levy and 2017-2018 school district budget will be discussed, and the public will be allowed time to comment on the issues of the property tax levy and school district budget at a school board special session to be scheduled on Tuesday, December 5, 2017, at 6:00 PM in Room 137 of the Edison Administration Building, 615 Seventh Street Southwest, Rochester, Minnesota. And be it further resolved that the final levy will be adopted at the regular school board meeting scheduled on Tuesday, December 12, 2017, at 5:30 PM. And be it further resolved that the county auditors be notified of these dates and times, and that notices be published as required by the Commissioner of Revenue.
Second.
Any discussion? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 7.05, resolution disciplining an employee. This is an action item, and it requires a roll call vote. Ms...
Read the resolution.
Oh, I have to read a resolution? Now therefore be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 535 Rochester Public Schools as follows. One, the school board hereby approves the letter setting forth a discipline and the basis or cause for the discipline. Two, the school board chair is directed to sign the letter on behalf of the school board. Three, the district superintendent or his designee is directed to serve the approved letter on the employee and to place a copy of the letter in the employee's personnel file. Four, pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 13.43, subdivision 2, the specific reasons for the proposed discipline, the nature of the proposed discipline, and the letter are private data on the employee until final disposition of the proposed disciplinary action.
Move approval.
Second.
All those, nope, roll call vote. Sorry. I remembered.
No, no.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes?
Mrs. Becker?
Aye.
Ms. Marvin?
Aye.
Mr. Schlesner?
Aye.
Ms. Seelinger?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
I feel strongly, both ways. Aye, yes.
Chair Workman?
Yes.
That's it.
Mm-hmm.
This meeting is adjourned at 6:39 PM.